Yep. What happened to my gavel? Down the turn, I tried to steal it.
This is as good as it gets. Don't wait for me.
Okay. Okay, being 5:30, I now call to order the regular meeting of the Lake Placid Town Council this 10th day of April 2023 in the government center of Lake Placid, Florida. Ask everybody to please make sure your phones are either on off or vibrate. And if everybody would please, please rise at this time, we are pleased to have with us Pastor Drew Severnson from the First Presbyterian Church, who's going to lead us in our invocation and pledge.
So evening, thanks for the privilege of coming to pray. Let's do that. Father in heaven, we thank you for the rain. We need us some rain, and we realize that's a gift from you. We pray it be a huge blessing to the Ag folks here in our local community. Father, whenever it rains, it reminds us of the many, many blessings that you rain down upon us, and we recognize that all those are totally undeserved. Father, we thank you for this town, this community that we live in, the paradise that we get to experience every day. Father, I lift up this meeting, I lift up these folks, be making votes, taking votes on different issues. Father, that they would look to you for wisdom, that you would grant them unity, and that the decisions they make would please you and be according to your will. We pray this in the matchless name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Severnson. Clark, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Holbrook?
Here.
Councilmember Rice?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Satt?
Here.
Councilmember Hayes?
Here.
Okay, consent agenda one, A through E.
I move to approve consent agenda one, A through E.
Second.
We have a motion of second. Any comments from the podium? Hearing none, we'll take it to the audience. Okay, saying none, bring it back. Pull the council, please.
Councilmember Satt?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rice?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
All right, I ask no consent agenda two. We'll go to presentations. We have a couple of proclamations. One is proclamation 2023-02, a proclamation of town of Lake Placid recognizing May 18, 2023 as International Museum Day in Highlands County. And whereas museums throughout Highlands County, United States, and the world provide unique educational and cultural opportunities that significantly enhance our quality of life, and whereas museums play a vital role in preserving Highlands County's rich history, telling stories about our past while providing insight into our future by maintaining and nurturing historical links, and whereas Highlands County museums will celebrate International Museum Day on March 18, 2023 in numerous ways, including offering special tours and hosting guest speakers, whereas with the theme museums, sustainability, and well-being, the 2023 observance of International Museum Day serves as a reminder that museums have the power to achieve sustainability in various ways, including fostering inclusivity, tackling social isolation, and improving mental health. Whereas we encourage all Highlands County residents to recognize the importance of museums to our community and to work together to preserve these valuable institutions for our enjoyment and benefit today and the future. Now therefore be resolved by Mayor John Holbrook of the town of Lake Placid, Highlands County, Florida, proclaiming May 18, 2023 as International Museum Day in Highlands County, Florida, dated this 10th day of April 23rd. Any questions from the podium?
I make a motion that we approve proclamation 2023-02.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of the second. Any comments from the podium? Hearing none, take it to the audience. Bring it back. So be it.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Rice?
Yes.
Councilmember Satt?
Yes.
Next one is proclamation 2023-03. Whereas the first full week of May is recognized by National Travel and Tourism Week to promote the contributions of travel and tourism to our nation's economies, prosperity and image around the world, and the well-being of Americans. Whereas travel to and within the United States produces significant economic benefits, generating 2.1 trillion in economic output and supports 15 million jobs. And whereas travel and tourism are vital components of Highlands County diverse economy, a cornerstone of our vibrant quality of life, and a catalyst for entrepreneurship, cultural enrichment, historic preservation, community revitalization, and economic growth. Whereas in recent years, visitor spending in Highlands County generated 272.5 million per year, had a 247.5 million annual economic impact to the county, providing 3,866 jobs, and saved each Highlands County household $169 a year. And whereas the Highlands County Tourist Development Council was established to stimulate the tourism industry in Highlands County, support the development of local tourism marketing programs, and increase the prosperity and welfare of the people of Highlands County. And whereas in an effort to make Highlands County as a premier travel destination, the Highlands County Travel Development Council works tirelessly in partnership with localities, businesses, and nonprofit institutions to extend the appeal and reach of Highlands County tourism advertising and promotion. And whereas travel and tourism professionals are devoted ambassadors for Highlands County whose commitment to economic opportunity, community development, hospitality, and progress exemplify the highest ideals and best traditions of Highlands County. Now therefore be resolved by Mayor John Holbrook of the town of Lake Placid, Highlands County, Florida, does hereby recognize May 7 through 13, 2023 as National Travel and Tourism Week in Highlands County, and calls this observance to the attention of all citizens. Any questions from the podium? Okay. Next, we have.
Mr. Mayor, do we need a motion to approve this? I'd make a motion to approve proclamation 2023-03, National Travel and Tourism Week, May 7 to 13, 2023.
Okay. Second. All right, we have a motion of second. Any comments from the podium? Saying none, we'll take it to the audience. All right, hearing none, bring it back. Pull the council.
Councilmember Hayes? Approve, yes. Councilmember Rice?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Satt?
Yes.
Okay, we have with us Mr. Tom Hicks, Project Hope manager, who would like to speak to the council.
Thank you for the opportunity to address you today. It's a pleasure to be here. I live in Lakeland, but I'm working in this area a lot with Tri-County Human Services. I don't know if you're familiar with Tri-County Human Services, so let me give you just a little bit of background. I've given you some brochures up there to detail a little bit more about what we are doing. But Tri-County Human Services is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit mental health agency. We offer a lot of different services across our area of responsibility, which are Hardy, Highlands, and Polk counties. And we offer behavioral health evaluation and counseling. We do substance abuse treatment and counseling. We have detox units. We have inpatient and outpatient treatments. We have DUI programs and more. We have a lot going on in Tri-County. But the reason that I am here today is that I was hired back in November as the project manager for Project Hope. Project Hope is a FEMA-sponsored program where we reach out to the people who in this area who are going through some difficult times, and we offer them crisis counseling. So the reason I am here is because of September 28 of 2022, probably a date that many of us will always remember. Hurricane Ian hit the Gulf Coast on that day. And as you remember, I probably don't have to remind you, but it did reach a category five briefly before hitting the land. It reached maximum sustained winds of 161 miles an hour. When it hit the coast, the Gulf Coast, the maximum sustained winds had dropped to 150 miles an hour, making it a very strong category four storm. With that came a lot of damage and a lot of death and destruction in this area. True more so towards the coast, but it did come inland and affected many of the counties that we are dealing with. And so we are here to offer counseling to those that are still struggling, who are going through a difficult time, trying to get back on their feet, and trying to recover from this hurricane. Just a few more facts about this hurricane. It was tied for the fourth strongest storm to ever make landfall in Florida. It left more than 20 inches of rain, and if you know, the Peace River flooded to a maximum of 28 to 30 feet over its shores, so it was very devastating. It was the second deadliest storm to hit the continental United States in this century behind Hurricane Katrina in 2005. Of those that were killed, which were more than 160, but 149 in Florida, 58% of them drowned. 13% of them died because of lack of services, emergency services, to get to them. How did that affect Highlands County? Well, I'm going through by some old statistics here because the census statistics are 2020. But in 2020, the Highlands County had a population of 101,235. Now FEMA has told us that 19% of the residents of Highlands County were adversely affected by this hurricane. So that means that there were 19,235 people in Highlands County who were very adversely affected. How does that affect Lake Placid? Again, going by old statistics from 2020 with the U.S. Census, population of 2,360. If you take that 19% as an average, that means there were 448 people in Lake Placid who suffered very adverse effects from the hurricane. I had this demonstrated to me back a couple of months ago now. I had contacted the Highlands County Emergency Management System to get the word out that we're available for crisis counseling. It went to the county commissioner's Facebook page, and they posted it on their Facebook page. The very first call that I got was a lady from Lake Placid. And she was calling, asking for help. She was suffering with severe anxiety, and that had also turned to alcoholism. We were able to get her into treatment, and she's progressing through her treatments now and is making progress, and I'm glad to report that she is doing better. But how many more are out there that need help? One of her frustrations was, I need someone to help me put a tarp on my roof. And so what we do is we talk to people, we listen to them, and we offer suggestions. We try to resource them and give them ideas of where they can get some help. But in the mental health realm, there are many aspects where this could be fleshed out. There are physical things that happen to people because of the stress and depression. There are emotional things, there are cognitive things that happen, and there are behavioral things that are affecting people. We want to get to these people before there's a boiling point, and we want to be able to talk to them and see if we can help them in any way to get some mental health counseling, get some help in some way or another before things get bad on their end. So basically, what I asked to speak today is because we want to bring hope to Highlands County. We want to bring hope to Lake Placid. I've been working largely in Hardy County because they were very hard-hit. 19% of the residents here were affected, 48% of the residents in Hardy County were affected, and only 17 in Polk County. So I mean, there's the differences, but we're beginning to move this direction. We've recently joined the Chamber of Commerce here in Lake Placid so that we can connect with people, and we want to get to know our businesses. We want to get to know the people so that we can offer help to the residents of Lake Placid in particular. Just want to let you know that there is a brochure that I've given you that you have a copy there. It's called Project Hope. It details a little bit about what we are doing. And I've also given you one of my business cards. I would love to talk to you sometime of how we can connect, how we can support one another. From what I understand, there are not any mental health agencies in Lake Placid. And so we're letting you know that we're available. Our closest office is in Avon Park, but we do teledoc, telehealth visits for people that need someone to talk to. So we want to make, I want to make you aware of our presence here. We want to work alongside of you and work together with you. And we're going to be here, this is a FEMA-sponsored program that is funded by FEMA until October 31st. So we've got a few months still that we can work together and try to get the word out. We would love to continue and offer mental health help in this area, even after and beyond that. But we'll need some assistance, so some things we need from you. First of all, we need to know where are the resources here? When we talk to people, who can we tell them to go to? We want to be able to connect with people. Help us to be able to know, how can we get to people and talk to them? Where's the best place to go? We are planning on being here for the Caladium Festival in July. We're going to set up a tent there and try to impact as many people as possible there. But we want to help Highlands County. We want to help Lake Placid. So my presence here today is simply to say, we're here, we want to come alongside of you, and we look forward to working along with you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any questions of this gentleman before he leaves? Thank you, appreciate you being here. At this time, we do have a citizen's request to speak. Katie Wilson?
Hey, guys. I'm coming to you as a parent who's concerned. I don't know if you've heard, but Lake Placid Middle School is losing their principal. Last Thursday, the staff and then parents at Lake Placid Middle School received the news that both the principal and the assistant principal would be moving to Hill Gustat Middle School. My concern is that Shane Ward, who is the principal of Lake Placid Middle School, has been reassigned to Hill Gustat in Sebring. We have approximately seven weeks left in the school year with a critical end of the testing coming up. Both administrators will be, a move of both administrators will be catastrophic to the entire community of Lake Placid. As of today's date, no replacement principal has been announced. I feel compelled to remind the town council that currently Lake Placid Elementary has a D school, one of three schools in Highlands County that the governor has had to intervene in. So we have a failing elementary school, and now Superintendent Longshore wants to take both of our middle school administrators to a Sebring Middle School that is academically ranked higher than Lake Placid Middle. Mr. Ward has been, was moved to Lake Placid Middle School from Lake Country Elementary approximately 18 months ago. Shane was brought to the middle school. We had students fighting all the time, teachers were unhappy, low school grade, and parents were also not happy. As a parent of an Lake Country student, which I was, I was okay with Mr. Ward being moved to the middle school because I knew that he would get it prepared and ready for when my son would be attending the middle school, and he did. Things are finally in place. The staff and teachers are happy with their administration. The grade is improving, and students feel safe again. Hill Gustat has had issues over approximately the last two years, teachers leaving behind vacancies, and the principal quitting mid-year. Yet the superintendent did nothing to start working on these issues before it became a bigger problem. Last year, over 50 staff members left Hill Gustat Middle School. Why should Lake Placid Middle pay the price for mismanagement of the Sebring Middle School? While Mr. Ward has proven he can fix schools, moving him to Hill Gustat, who currently has a higher school grade than Lake Placid Middle, is only going to create a new problem back down in our town. I've already talked to teachers who want to follow Shane up to Hill Gustat or move to the high school and even move out of our district. So where does this leave our middle school come the fall? Full and short-term subs filling in, teaching subjects that they didn't go to school to teach. Will safety become a concern again? All of these things won't help our students grow and learn. The distractions alone will cost so much class time. So the teachers are finally standing up against this move, and the parents are right behind them in hopes that the school board can overturn the superintendent's decision, keeping Mr. Ward and his assistant principal, Mr. Johnson, who is also moving with him to Hill Gustat in Lake Placid. I'm here hoping that the town of Lake Placid will support our wanting to keep the principal here with a letter for tomorrow's school board meeting at 5:30. I realize this is a quick turnaround and to ask for support, but please remember that the staff and parents only found out about this last Thursday. So thank you for your time.
Okay. I will, I will put in the thing now. We do have a resolution that came before town council, and I'll go ahead and read it at this time.
Mr. Mayor?
No?
If I might, Mr. Mayor, I would suggest we have a substitute resolution other than the one that's contained in the packet, if it's for us to consider.
Okay.
If I might, Mr. Mayor, to Ms. Wilson's. And I see Mr. Martin's with us, so he can obviously lend his expertise. I spoke with Mr. Harris earlier today, and we kind of talked about what we may want to consider in the resolution, understanding fully that this is not our purview at all. This has been in the process for the last four or five weeks. It's basically a done deal, and probably nothing we say or do is going to change it. Frankly, I don't think it's the purview even of the Highlands County School Board. They have little to no ability to do that without going through quite a process. And so the resolution I would ask us to consider, I believe, is more, it notes our opposition to this move, but it's really more forward-looking and to make sure that as we move forward, that the greater Lake Placid area always has an equitable, you know, level of educational opportunities, school management opportunities with other institutions in the county. So for those reasons, if I might, Mr. Mayor, let me just pass some of these down so everyone in the council has one. And let me save a couple here now in case anyone from the public, Ms. Wilson, if you want one. Yeah. And we can have a conversation, and if any of other fellow council members are interested in going this route, we can, but and I certainly think it would be appropriate if Mr. Martin wants to comment on what he perceives the school board's role in this is. But my understanding from talking to former school board members, it would be very, very difficult, if not impossible, to change the course of action that the superintendent has in place. And so just to do this right, I will make a motion that we consider the adoption of the resolution as presented to council.
The second.
Okay. We have a motion of second. Any further discussion on the podium? Okay, we'll take the audience. Any other comments from the audience? I know.
Now here's some other copies if you want to. Again, I know we are all very concerned about the implications of this. I just want to be realistic in what our approach is. And I think what's important at this stage is to make sure that, and I guess maybe this message is for Mr. Martin, that we often get caught up in silliness in regards to the school system. And my friend Ms. Fincher, who's sitting back there in the back row, reminds me all the time that we're either the fifth or worst, sixth worst-ranked school system in the state out of 67, and our real goal is, how do we improve and move ourselves into being in the top five or six school systems in the state and not be in the bottom five or six? And it's all possible if you get, if we have, you know, leadership and go. It has nothing to do with the size of the county. Some of the better school systems in the state of Florida are in smaller counties. And so that ought to be our goal going forward, whether it's for our quality of life, whether it's for economic development, which our school system has a negative impact on, or other things, we need to move forward with trying to create an even better system to the benefit the young people in our area.
You want to read it for the record?
Well, Mr. Mayor, why don't you do it, especially since I gave away my copy? Or if you want me to, I will, Mr. Mayor. A resolution of Lake Placid Town Council regarding the Lake Placid Middle School. The Lake Placid Town Council was duly assembled and regularly sessioned on 10 April, 2023. A quorum was present. Mayor John M. Holbrook presided. Among other things, the town council took up for consideration the issues regarding the Lake Placid Middle School. Upon motion duly made, and seconded as the Lake Placid Town Council resolved as follows. The Highlands County School Board employed and designated Shane Ward as principal, comma, Ward, and Jeff Johnson as assistant principal, comma, Prince Johnson of the Lake Placid Middle School. Ward and Johnson brought great improvements to the Lake Placid Middle School. Lake Placid Middle School students benefited greatly from their presence, wisdom, leadership, and management. Relocating Ward and Johnson will not benefit, but will in fact be detrimental to the educational opportunities of Lake Placid Middle School students. Accordingly, we respectfully oppose their transfer. In the event of the transfer of Ward and Johnson from the Lake Placid Middle School, Superintendent Longshore should immediately mitigate the loss by providing high-quality replacements and equitable long-term educational opportunities and management for the students of the greater Lake Placid area, resolved by the Lake Placid Town Council this 10th day of April, 2023. And I'll say again in support of my thing, I guess the question that came to my mind was, why take both administrators? My understanding is when Mr. Ward was, became aware he was going to be designated elsewhere, he asked to take Mr. Johnson with him, and that was one of the conditions. I don't know if that, how true that is or isn't, but that's, again, what was told to me today. So again, I think we ought to weigh in in some degree, mainly looking forward. I see Mr. Martin wants to comment.
Thank you. Just clarify, just so you know what I know right now. Yes, Dr. Longshore met with the teachers today at Lake Placid Middle. The position at Hill Gustat's been posted three times, and they said they've had one applicant apply. Applicant was from Georgia, did not meet the qualifications they needed, so they did not hire that person. So here in the last five weeks or so, she has decided that it was better to move administration from Lake Placid to Hill Gustat. So I found out last week, just the same time the teacher So I found out last week, just the same time the teachers did, so I had no idea. So very limited as far as what information I have. I do know I have heard from a lot of our community members, our teachers, very unhappy right now with the situation. We do currently have eighty-one and a half vacancies in our schools. Anytime we move a good administrator, we, we do run the risk that we're going to lose teachers. Some of our veteran teachers potentially may leave the system. Others may leave and go to Sebring, follow them, or to the high school. So there is correct in that information. Um, you know, we appreciate anything you can do. Again, um, they're extremely important to what they've done in our school. Lake Placid Middle did have problems two years ago. Mr. Ward came in, and he does have a plan. He's implementing that plan, and he's actually already got plans for next year to fur- further improve what he's been doing. They are, as it was mentioned, Hill Gustad does have a, a higher grade percentage than what we have in Lake Placid, but we're growing. We're on a trajectory up, and we hate to, to stop that trajectory and keep it moving. So if you have any questions otherwise.
Mr. Mayor, from my, and Mr. Martin, it's also my understanding that the timing of the move, while it may seem weird to us, is important in the sense that in order for both the, the folks at Hill Gustad and the subsequent leadership here at Lake Placid Middle School, they need to get started in a matter of days, making their requests for staff, funding, and so this is something that it would, it would be detrimental to both institutions if it waited till the summertime to make a change. Is that accurate to your knowledge?
Potentially, teachers are going to be making, um, their decisions as far as where they want to be, what they want to do, which classes. So at this time, yes, they are, they are told the administration's going to be moving, so the teachers will be making determinations if they want to move, transfer to another school in open positions. Um, I think what I've heard, Lake Placid, we may have five open positions at Lake Placid for the core curriculum. Not sure of the number at Hill Gustad, but there's quite a few more. I know there were approximately fifty that left last year. Most of those are probably filled with long-term subs, and, uh, so they will be making that determination if they want to leave, and that's why they did it in this, this timing that they did. So what's got a lot of people upset, we have testing coming up in a couple weeks. Teachers are preparing, so this has been kind of hard on the morale for the teachers in the school right now. Any other questions at all?
Okay. Thank you.
I do have a comment before we go on, if you don't mind. I, uh, I can sympathize with everyone at Lake, Lake Placid Middle. I understand it's very difficult when you lose an administrator, and just in this case too. However, um, I don't believe this is our purview as the town council. We do not have full information on why this is being done. We, we don't know, and I think a lot of people don't really know, but it's really not our business. This is a school board issue. And while we are concerned, I'm sure, about the quality of our schools here in Lake Placid, I don't think that we should micromanage the school board.
I probably spend most of my time on school board issues. I think it's a priority issue in the town and in the county over Citrus for me personally, and over the growth and development in Lake Placid, which are my top three. We are fifth academically from the bottom in the district. So I can understand and appreciate your comments about it's not really purview of the town council. What happens in our schools, it bleeds over into our industry and our businesses, into our community. I think we all better start caring what's happening in our school system. You've got D, and if we didn't have to report the previous year of the school grades, it was a F at Lake Placid Elementary School. That was a solid B school. You've got Lake Placid Middle, that is going up, but it's still two hundred points in ranking below Hill Gustad. Hill Gustad, the B school that dropped to a C, that's, that it, it hovers around a B. They're, they're over academically like Placid Middle. We are far down on the, the rating. You got, I could go into statistics for Lake Placid High School. It is no better. You've got eighty percent of the black kids in our community that score level one or two, which is the worst, from ninth to twelfth grades in English and Language Arts. So we're, I, I understand that it's not directly involved in the town council. It's our community. It should affect all of it. It affects the Sheriff's Department, the so-and-so. You go into stores, we're a product, the, the kids are a product of our, of our community. I appreciate the quick turnaround of this resolution. I appreciate the sentiment behind it. And it is, it, we found out about it Thursday. Parent, our teachers found about it Thursday. There's a lot more involved, and you're correct in that. And I wholeheartedly support Shane Ward and Mr. Johnson staying in Lake Placid. I don't think it's fair at all to our community that they be sent off to Sebring that's academically superior to Lake Placid. We're going to pay a huge price as a community if this happens. Thank you.
Okay, we've heard the resolution.
We've got a motion?
Yeah.
In a second, yes.
In a second, okay.
What?
Vote.
We have a motion in a second?
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments from the podium? Any other from the audience? Okay, bring them back, poll the council.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
No.
Okay, thank you. We'll get this out to them right away. The other thing is, get your parents and grandparents and be at the school board meeting and, uh, let them know how we feel. That's, uh, don't know if it'll help or not, but it will sure get the message across. And I see the, the press is here tonight, so maybe we can do something there to, to help our community also, so. Okay. All right, I guess now we have Agenda Item 4A, Resolution 2023-3, Regarding Taco Bell Architectural Design Variance. A resolution of Town of Lake Placid, Florida pertaining to Section 152-17, seventeen-point-three, granting a maximum variance of one point five feet from the minimum ceiling height requirements of ten feet to allow an interior ceiling height of nine foot, six inches in the main dining room, nine foot, zero inches in the kitchen, eight foot, ten inches in the office, and eight foot, six in the restrooms for a new restaurant at 501 U.S., 27 North, Lake Placid, Florida. Mr. Mayor, I'll move approval of Resolution 2023-3.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any other comments?
I would table that one until the other one is resolved as well.
Okay. And we'll go to 4B, Resolution 2023-4, Regarding the Taco Bell Limited Landscaping Waiver. A resolution of Town of Lake Placid, Florida pertaining to Section 161.11, three in parentheses E, granting a limited landscaping waiver to allow, allow a three-foot landscaping strip instead of the required five-foot landscaping strip adjacent to the parking area on the south perimeter of the property for a new development of 501 U.S., 27 North, Lake Placid, Florida.
Thank you, Dana Riddell, town planner, for the record. I just want to double-check before I get started. Is Sam Medina here from, ah, there he is. Okay, I didn't see him earlier. Okay, that is the applicant, Sam Medina, and we'll also open up the floor to him later to answer any questions that the council may have. I went ahead and prepared a PowerPoint presentation, so I'm going to go ahead and skip over to my second portion of the presentation. This case number is LPSP 22007-2, Resolution 2023-04. This is in regards to the Taco Bell Limited Landscaping Waiver, and the property is currently owned by, I want to pronounce it as Loon Vantage Partners, LLC. As I mentioned, the applicant and agent is Sloan Engineering, under the care of Sam Medina, and the address is 501 U.S., 27 North. This is the old Platters location. It's Zone C1 Highway Commercial with a commercial general future land use. And the town's code requires that a five-foot landscaping strip be provided around the perimeter of parking areas so as to create a buffer from adjoining land uses, streets, and properties. Now, later on in the presentation and in your packets, I'll show you a site plan of the proposed Taco Bell, and the proposed parking area is on the south side of the building. So they're requesting that they be allowed to have a three-foot landscaping strip on the southern perimeter of the subject property, where the parking lot is adjacent to the other parking area to the south. It'll be easier to explain with visuals. So up here, I do have the landscaping plan, and you can see that parking is shown on the south side of the property. And over on the north is a drive aisle, it's their drive-through, it's not really a parking area. So two things to note, one being that landscaping would not be required on the north portion of the property because it's not adjacent to an actual parking lot, but also landscaping is not required in a buffering sense between the north and the south because the uses in the code are considered compatible. So the only reason that landscaping is required is on the south portion of the property to shield the adjacent property from the parking, which can be considered blight. So the applicants were nice enough, they went above and beyond due to some requests from staff. So over on the east side of the property, where it's adjacent to a street, across that street are residential homes. Keeping in mind that originally this site had two driveways on that side, so they've narrowed it down to one driveway, and then they provided additional landscaping that was not required to shield those residential homes from lights, noise, glare, anything of that nature. And then on the north side, they did continue to keep that three foot of landscaping, I think to create a more evened site and to just provide additional barriers, um, between their property and the property to the north. So to the southeast, we have their retention area. Since that's not a parking area, that also does not require landscaping. So the applicant said, that's okay, we'll go ahead and provide landscaping in those areas anyway. They, they said, we'll see if we can do an exchange here to add more landscaping in these areas and reduce it in the area to the south. This is the legend, if we come back and we have any questions, I just put that in there in case there were questions about it. But in the resolution that we're asking for approval today, we added some conditions. The first condition being that if there is a change in use, meaning it's no longer a restaurant one day and it turns into something else entirely, then that voids this resolution, that the property cannot be further subdivided in any way, otherwise, again, the resolution is voided. But then we also said, okay, if you said you're going to add all this other landscaping, we're going to hold you to the fire, we're going to ask you to do it and make it a condition of this variance request, and we're going to ask you to add the other landscaping that we already talked about. So that's a three-foot landscaping strip to the north, a three-foot landscaping strip adjacent to the retention area in the southeast, and a ten-foot landscaping strip on the east side across from the residential properties. Up on the screen are the required findings. So to be clear, most of the time we have a variance. It usually goes to the Board of Adjustment, but sometimes in our code, it says the variance must go to town council, or it sends it to another board. In this particular case, the variance request must go before town council, and it's actually a waiver. The first one was a variance, but this one's a landscaping waiver. But either way, these are the things that you must find to be true in order to allow the variance or the, the waiver, I'm sorry. So I went ahead and listed some motion options up on the screen, but aside from that, I'll turn it back over to town council, and I'm available for any questions.
The resolution here that we have in front of us doesn't mention the ten-foot strip in the back. Does that need to be added to the resolution? On the one in front of me, it shows a three-foot strip, a five-foot strip. I don't see a ten-foot strip on here.
You're talking about the east side?
On the east side, yes.
The actual resolution?
Yeah, corresponding with the, with the actual landscape design. Uh, if you could pull up the map.
Yeah, I think that's just, I think that's a strip over here by the retention. Think that is a ten-foot strip.
The resolution doesn't have that written in it, though. You said you wanted that to be in it.
Yes, I do want that. I'm showing on page four of the actual resolution, a three-foot landscaping strip along the northern perimeter, a three-foot landscaping strip in the southeast corner next to the retention, and then ten-foot on the east across from the residential. Does that sound right?
I'll approve 2023-04. I have to make sure the wording's proper on this before it's done, and the one in front of us only mentions the two, the three-foot and the five-foot, but does not mention the ten-foot. So that would need to be added.
Oh, it's, it's in the attachments, Greg, in the landscape plan.
If that counts, then I.
Yeah, it would be, it would be, I'm assuming, part of the landscape plan, uh, that's submitted in there that shows it.
Is the plan attached to the resolution is the question?
No, I don't have it attached as an exhibit, but I can attach it as an exhibit. Okay, so you're talking, okay, yes, in the, in the sketch of the landscape plan, are you referring to the bottom left-hand corner where it says the landscape width is five feet? Does it say that there? Because that did also throw me for a loop, too, when they sent me the plan.
You said you were going to require a ten-foot buffer and wanted that in this. It's not in this.
It's on page eighty-one of 179.
If it's added in there, then I'll move to approve 2023-04.
I'd like to comment before you go that far, if I may. The issue I see in this is the driveway that opens into a residential home, thinking headlights at night when this is open. I don't know whether there's enough room to do a U-turn. I'd defer to, I'd love to hear what the applicant has to say on that. If not, then I'd sure love to see that, to know what that landscaping ten-foot buffer contains. What did you settle on as far as the plans? In other words, I'd at least like to make that as strong as possible if we have to allow, and he has no other option than have that driveway exit into somebody's bedroom windows.
Phil, is there any way you?
Why don't you let him come up and answer some of these questions?
Yep, that would be great.
I don't mean to put you on the spot, and for the record, certainly tearing down this building and having a new facility would be a great thing, but while it's, while we're here, if we can fix a few problems with the neighborhood. But while it's, while we're here, if we can fix a few problems with the neighborhood would be nice.
Sure. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm Sam Medina with Sloan Engineering Group here on behalf of Lewin Vantage Partners, the property owner. To address your specific question, that was actually a comment from staff where we originally had our driveway coming in. We actually relocated it to try to align with the driveway of the house on the east side of Plaza Avenue so that we weren't creating headlights shining directly through people's windows. So we kind of have a, as people are exiting, if you see, I don't know if Dana, maybe you could put that site plan back up.
Phil, is there any way you can go back?
But we actually, we actually added a curve in that driveway so that as people were either coming off of 27 into our site, you didn't have those headlights facing them. We have that buffer and there's a, there's a curve in that driveway that kind of serpentines to shield them. You are going to have somebody directly at the stop sign, obviously, with headlights at night. So we did try to align that driveway on the east with the driveway that is serving that single-family home on the east side. So at least there's nothing new that they would see if they're pulling into their own house. They would, they would observe that. So we did try to accommodate that to the greatest extent.
What, what I was asking you actually is, is there enough room on site to do a U? So you don't have to exit in the back?
Unfortunately, with the, so we've got a very challenging site. It's very narrow. And as part of trying, trying to provide that buffer on the south, we did have to go to one-way, one-way parking there on that southern end. So we anticipate those patrons coming in on that east side. We do have large delivery trucks that are going to be servicing this site and they're, that is one of the biggest things with circulation we look at. And really, they do need to navigate that entire, that entire site. So we really needed the secondary access.
So what buffer plants did you put in on the east side?
Yes, on the east side there, I believe we were showing, and we can pull that legend back up, but we have a mix of crepe myrtles. Pull that plan up.
Uh, upon hollies and crepe myrtles, basically.
Crepe myrtle doesn't provide a buffer, period. I mean, those, we have those all over town. Would you substitute parrotus?
What's parrotus?
Yeah, we're proposing crepe myrtles and the hollies on that, on that side.
On the top, they're out the middle of 27.
On the east, eastern 10-foot buffer.
Would you substitute parrotus?
Along with silver palmettos. That's really the, the lower ground cover shrubs, so I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Silver palmettos are great in the lower end. Would you substitute parrotus for the larger?
On that eastern side? Yeah, we would, we would, we would not have a problem with that.
Good. Where else did you put the silver palmettos we requested as staff?
Yeah, silver palmettos are located throughout on the southwest corner. The symbol there, I can't see it. It's a little hard to see on my small prints, but silver palmettos are all along that southern border where we're required to have the buffer and on the northern buffer as well.
Great. I didn't see that. Thank you.
Yep. I would also just like to point out that that southern side, we are there in the, you know, the large parking lot there in front of the tower. So that three-foot reduction is actually adjacent to a little stormwater area. So we're not directly affecting anyone.
Complements it nicely.
They're, they're adjacent, so.
Dana, what did we have for enforcement? I believe we, your concern was not to put enforcement mechanism in the PD, but to have it in the developer's agreement? Or did you put it in the PD?
On this particular site, there's no need for a PD, so I didn't do PD and I don't believe we have a developer's agreement.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have a developer's agreement. It's straight zoning.
The enforcement mechanism for landscaping and irrigation.
There's a section in our code that holds them to the fire. That was the landscaping code was adopted.
And so that was going to be my question is, we either need to have a maintenance language in here or we need to very specifically outline what that code is so that it is written into the special conditions, the maintenance.
I agree.
I mean, the irrigation and maintenance. I mean, that's what we need. And that's, I'm not picking on them, that we need to do that for everything.
And, and obviously, we do have a legend for specifications for, you know, eight-foot minimum tree heights at time of planting that would be at a, you know, final inspection for a CO. But yeah, in perpetuity, right now, as it is, I think it's just falling back to the code for, you know, I guess code enforcement issue. So we need to, we'd be open to having some time, type of, you know, biannual, annual inspection period to, you know, have the city come out and do a review of, of what the landscaping's looking like.
We generally have a concept of code enforcement as it goes along, not just once a year. I would recommend approval of the resolution for the landscape waiver, did you call? I, I was going to do both of these together because I wasn't going to grant one without the other or recommend that. But if you're going to, we'd need a developer's agreement to enforce the landscaping plan as a condition of the waiver. Is that acceptable to you?
Yeah, would it be acceptable to have that agreement completed at a certain time prior to CO? Would that be amenable?
Why can't we do it now?
We can do it now. We're, we're really anxious to get out there and actually start working, you know, as soon as possible on this project.
Sure, prior to CO is acceptable.
Okay.
So we'll have to do a little bit of changing on the 10-foot, the contents of the 10-foot on the east and the developer's agreement to enforce.
Hey, Bert. As far as enforcement, there is a note that, a standard note that gets put on all these plans about landscaping and, and maintenance and commits them to that. So I'd rather just have it put on the plans.
You can do both.
Okay.
Let's, let's make sure in everything moving forward, we have irrigation and landscape maintenance spelled out as, in the conditions so that it's extremely clear to everyone.
It, that, that's a requirement on all plans that come through on landscape and maintenance. They're required to put standard language in there saying they will maintain it per this plan.
And I'm more interested in going beyond that to say, and if they don't, here's what's happened. Here's what happens.
I'm also concerned about people coming out that back entrance and being able to see clearly so that they don't pull into dangerous oncoming traffic. Although that's not a busy street there, it only takes another car to make an accident.
Which is the reason the parrotus will need to be pulled back from the property line. So when they pull up to the stop bar, theirs are not blocking the view.
They, if you look at the landscape plan, they've provided a site triangle there that addresses that concern.
Yeah, I saw that it was pulled back some, yeah.
Yep.
I guess I presume that 90% of the vehicular traffic was going to exit out of the west entrance. It's going to go on around and go back. I mean, people going through the drive-through and everything are going to be headed back west.
That's definitely where we anticipate the majority of our traffic to occur, is to be exiting back towards 27 or outside of the, after they approach and enter the, the drive-through lane.
That was one of the things, thank you, Ray, that I was recommending. Did you put in the pork chop to keep the drive-through folks from turning back to the left or east?
The pork chop, where are you referring to there?
If we could get the site plan back up. Where they exit the drive-through back into your parking area, they could turn right or left.
Correct.
There was a suggestion that you put a pork chop, I think that's what you call it, so they cannot turn to the left. They could only go back to 27.
Well, I think the reason that we have them with the ability to, to turn left out of that exit is, you know, not, we'd like to say that every order is perfect, but sometimes you do got to whip back around. So we do want to give them that opportunity to, to, to navigate back through the site in case there was a reason that they needed to come back in the store or go back through the drive-through again.
And I think if they're going to exit and want to go south, I think they're going to have to, I don't think that goes across on 27, does it? I think they're going to have to go north to go south.
They're actually exiting onto a service street, not 27.
Okay, okay.
So they go north or south on that.
That's correct. Or we'd have to go across East Side Drive, which is right there.
I don't know what to say about that bad order thing. That does present a problem. I just hate to encourage or allow folks to go back into the folks' bedroom if they don't have to. But I get your bad order deal.
Okay.
I was going to say, it's been there for a long time.
Let's say what.
And it's better, this is way better than it has been for the last 60 years.
It's better.
So it's a huge improvement. And I don't know what else could be done differently.
Yeah, I don't either. He's been very cooperative. Thank you.
So to get us, I assume, towards approval, Mr. Harris, did you want to combine these? Or were we just talking about holding up on our first motion until we had this conversation?
He needs to go forward on the first motion. I appreciate that. So I'd say let's adopt the resolution as requested on the building changes and adopt the landscape waiver conditioned on a, Joe's language in the plan, is it already in the plan, Joe, yours? So he's good. Then conditioned on enforcement in a developer agreement.
Okay, I mean, so we can.
To be prior to.
Prior to CO.
CO.
So we can take these as two items.
Yes, you can.
So I'll reiterate my motion to adopt resolution 2023-03.
I'll second.
We don't have a couple of 2023-3's now, do we? With what we did earlier?
This is a resolution.
This is a proclamation. This is a resolution. Okay, just wanted to make sure.
And I'll move to approve 2023-4 with the wording they're discussing.
The change is made.
Yes.
I'll second that.
Doing two motions at once?
Is that sufficient?
Together. One and then the other.
2023-03 and 2023-04.
We're doing three right now. Do the other one separate? So do three first and then?
I'd suggest two votes, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so we have three.
Well, Ray's already rescinded his first one, so we need to do it again. I, I, I don't, I, I thought I reiterated it, but I, I mean, I guess I.
I'm confused now.
Well, let me just, where, what, if anything, is on the record right now? Nothing?
I had 2023-3 and you did reiterate.
A motion, a motion for that.
Right. First and the second with.
Okay, and I, I think what Mr. Harris is recommending is that we vote on that and then we'll take Mr. Sapp's motion next.
Okay. I missed that.
All right, so we have a motion, a second on that. Your second still good?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there any other comments from the podium? None here from the audience? All right, bring it back, poll the council.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Okay, now we'll go to 04 with the changes made.
Now, who was the first and the second on that one? I missed that.
Mr. Sapp was.
And who was the second?
I think me.
Okay.
That's the one that is upon condition of the.
Right, with the changes that you requested.
Okay.
Any other comments from the podium? Okay, we'll see none. We'll take it of the audience. Hearing none, bring it back, poll the council.
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Thank you all. We look forward to bringing this project to the town very quick.
What, I would say, what's your timeframe now? I have, I have people daily come in my, come in the store and.
I got to talk to Dana and, and Joe, but I mean, we'd like to break ground next week if we could, honestly. So, I mean, we're, we're really anxious, so.
All right.
Thank you.
Glad to have you as a neighbor.
5B1.
There it is.
Okay.
Can we go ahead?
Yeah, a pretty brief introduction. It was, it was just basically two words in my agenda title. Again, Dana Riddell, town planner. I'm here now asking for a little bit of direction in terms of how we want to proceed with our sign code. We have some inconsistencies based in practice, but also within the code itself. And I wanted to go ahead and get the go-ahead and the direction from Town Council that one of my first projects for me to work on would be revisions and updates to the sign code. And this is a result of a recent request. So I didn't initially come in wanting to do sign code right off the bat, especially because I know how important it is to the town. And I don't plan to do anything completely wild or off the charts or anything. I, I just want to get this straightened out. So in the staff report, I went ahead and I typed up a, a couple different inconsistencies that we have. So for one, we talk about banners, right? And I know the town really is not in favor of having banners for everything because it really detracts from the appearance of the town. So a banner in our code is defined as any strip of cloth, plastic, or other flexible material on which a sign is printed, painted, or otherwise displayed that is intended to be hung or mounted to a structure by cord, rope, cable, or similar method. Banner does not include blade signs, but blade signs are also prohibited. So we do allow banners sometimes in our code, and we allow it somewhat inconsistently only because we say that a new business is allowed to have a banner for the first 30 days, but we have four sign districts and that rule or allowance is only written out in one out of four sign districts, but we apply it to all four sign districts. And I think it kind of became an act of goodwill at some times to say, hey, we know you have a new business. We know you want to advertise it. You know, how does council feel about applying? I'm going to go through all of it and then maybe we can have a discussion at the end. How does council really feel about allowing it for those 30 days? Do we want to allow it for those 30 days for the start of a new business? That's the first question. The second question is, do we want to allow it in all sign districts? But then there's other times when banners might be beneficial to our community. So part of this stems from a request that I got about banners at the schools and the football fields. And those properties, or at least the school, is a little bit off the beaten path. You aren't really going down there unless you have a student who's in school. And so it was brought to my attention that we do have a lot of banners on the fence lines of the tennis courts and the various different courts that we have. And they were asking about adding more because it's used as a fundraiser for the kids. A business gets to advertise their business and in return, the school or the booster club or whatever entity takes in funds for that. And then there's also banners that, you know, are just hung for school spirit. This one in particular on this, on the screen is just being held. I think that was a Christmas parade banner. But they have banners that they might want to hang for school spirit. There's banners that the sheriff's department might want to put up for a fallen deputy or for other really important matters. So we want to consider if there are times or instances that would call to allow for us to allow the banners, but we want it to be within code. So another hot topic would be snipe signs. Snipe signs are any sign made of any material that's tacked, nailed, posted, pasted, glued, or otherwise attached to trees or electric or telephone poles, fences, sticks, or other objects. So this is something you might see at Wawa a lot. You'll see their sales on poles. You'll see organizations, and it's not like they're not reputable organizations. There are great organizations that are out here. They're just wanting to put their signs up, but they are prohibited by code. They also are especially prohibited from putting signs in the right-of-way. So that's something we want to evaluate. Shopping center signs are really interesting. I just pulled this picture off Google Earth. I didn't take this one in person, but a lot of these pictures did come from in-person sightings. This is the shopping center where Tractor Supply is. And a couple years ago, they, they wanted a shopping center sign. Now they have two. But a shopping center sign must be approved by the local planning agency. And that's something I think we might want to consider removing from the code. So for instance, Town Council, our building, we have multiple offices in this building and we have a state senator and we would like to put up a sign advertising both the state senator and our services, but that's going to require approval from the local planning agency. If not, the Town Council, there, there might be other elements to that where it might end up having to come back to Town Council. But for all of our other signs, they don't have. But for all of our other signs, they don't have to go to town council, a local planning agency, or the BOA for approval. That's something that's done on an administrative staff level. So if our code allows shopping center signs, the question is, do we allow it with permitting? Or do we continue to require reviews of these types of signs before we approve? Wall signs?
Why don't we have a vote of discussion on these as we go? Because you're probably going to forget the snipe signs by the time you get through all of them.
Right now, I'm just asking for-
What are you looking for?
I want to bring these issues to the town council's attention so that they're aware of what I- I don't want to catch anyone off guard when I come back in a month with all these different tax amendments and questions as to why I decided to start amending these codes. So right now, it's just an umbrella question. Okay, so in terms of wall signs, Burger King somehow got permitted with a, like, two wall signs. And there's an error in our code. Staff for years has been interpreting this error to mean... So again, there's inconsistencies. One portion of our code says signs are allowed on any wall of any business, but then later in the code, it says only on any front wall or any wall that has a street. So you kind of have to pick and choose. So then we go back to the Ice House, which I know is a really hot topic. But years ago, they had asked if they could do signage on multiple walls. And they even appealed the decision of the zoning official at the time. And it was upheld that no, the intent is to really only have wall signage on one wall. With me here as only one planner, I could probably do a lot of things by memory, but I really want to set us up for success for the next planner because there will be one after me. I'm not going to live forever. So with that being said, I think that was it. Yeah, so it's really just coming down to the decision of do you like our code the way it is? You're okay with these banners and certain inconsistencies? Or the practicing different from our code? Or would you like to proceed with revisions to the Townsland Development Regulations as it applies to signs?
I'd recommend you do one and two. Meaning, today, you should be enforcing existing sign codes as written. And number two, you should be bringing us recommendations after working with Mr. Barber and Mr. Harris as to how to handle this very complex situation. And I'm sure all five of us have opinions about how we should handle each of those things. And I think it has to be very consistent because if we're going to, you know, I mean, I don't- What wasn't in here was wooden signs or flec- or plastic signs that hang on fences. And so I assume all of our ball fields have signage on them at the park that we own. I don't know if on the, on Green Dragon Drive, if most of the signs are banners or if they're plastic signs or they're board signs, but we need to address it. I'm assuming others have gotten a call about wanting to do increased signage along Dal Hall on school board property. So I think we probably need to have special chapters that talks about what we're going to do in recreational facilities, what we're going to allow on school board or other public property. And that may be different, and maybe it shouldn't be different. But there's no doubt that there's, on Green Dragon, I don't go there very often. And Mr. Sapp probably goes every day. There's signage all along there. I don't know whether it's there legally or not today. I don't know whether the signs that hang in all the ball fields are legal or not today, but we certainly need to address that.
Those are banners mostly. There were some steel signs that were stuck to the outside of the fence, and the corners were peeled up, and it was dangerous for kids walking by and dangerous for me walking by there every evening. There were screws sticking out, and I think they finally took all those down. But it was certainly a hazard to the kids there, and I'm surprised they stayed up as long as they did.
How do you classify those signs, if you will, that go into the fences? It looks like they put cups or stuff, you know, into the fences that make, what is that?
I honestly wondered the same thing, but I know exactly what you're talking about.
Because there's a lot of that on Green Dragon. At least there used to be.
Like the ones that say the school mascot, it'll say Green Dragon. And how does the council feel about those signs?
I don't have a problem with that at all. I think that's great spirit and artistic, and I think that's fine. I don't think anyone's going to complain about anything on school board property. I think as long as it's safe, and those are things we can discuss over time. I see this as, you know, what does code enforcement guy do when he's driving by and sees a sign? Do you rip it up and throw it in your trunk and piss everybody off and bring it before council? He needs to know what he needs to be bringing to our attention. And there are people who are just blatantly not caring, and you got people who come in and ask for variances all the time. And if you give one, you have to give a bunch. We need guidance as well, so we got to figure this thing out together. And I appreciate you trying to undertake that.
Thank you.
No, I agree with you, Greg. I think those signs on the fences are really nice, and they're good for school spirit and all that kind of stuff. And they don't pose any hazard. They don't flap in the wind or, you know.
And it's a great fundraiser for the different ball teams.
Yep.
We have to be selective and careful how we do that.
Do we want to allow those types of cups on the fences on other properties? That might have been part of your question, too. We-
Well, no one else has said anything yet, so I think we'll cross that bridge when we get there. Right now, I've only seen it on the high school.
It's pretty much confined to schools.
Well, all three schools. I've seen it on middle school, high school, and elementary school.
I see them all. I used to see them all over the county, but they're schools.
When we adopted the sign code, we basically exempted Green Dragon Drive and said, let the school do whatever they want to do on Green Dragon.
What I don't want to see is churches and people's yards with cups stuck all in them all over the place. And that hasn't been a problem, so I don't think right now it's an issue. I don't want to make it an issue.
Yeah.
It's an issue if it's not in code.
Correct.
If the code's written and it's illegal, it's darn tough to not be able to force things, enforce things.
I haven't seen any right now. It's not an issue because I haven't seen any out there other than the ones on the school, and I'm fine with that.
So, Mr. Harris, have we exempted Green Dragon? And does that exemption apply to school board property on Dal Hall or not?
No, it was just Green Dragon. I don't remember whether it was written as an exemption, but it basically said, school board does that, or schools do that. I don't remember what it was, board, the principal, or-
Yes.
Three students after hours.
Did we exempt our recreational properties?
No, I don't recall. I don't-
I mean, I guess my point is that's got to be part of the review as to whether or not we're going to allow that on, you know, recreational, publicly owned recreational properties.
We may, it seemed like with the part of those, like, the special needs field, Miracle League.
Right.
We allowed interior-looking signage, not exterior-looking. I think, I'm not-
Again, I don't have children to play there, but I'm assuming the outfield fences of a lot of those things must have fundraising banners on them, right?
Sure.
So I did find the exemption. I'm glad you pointed that out. It does say the Highlands County School Board, so basically any property owned by the school board shall have exclusive jurisdiction over signage on school board property, provided that sign shall not be visible from a public street, which I'm not really sure they comply with the public street requirement. And also, our ball fields aren't owned by the school board. So yeah, I think that's a good point. We have to take all of that into account when we review.
The whole purpose is to be seen from a-
From a public street.
Public street.
Then it becomes like any other advertisement.
You see, I guess my point would be, I don't know how to, and this is obviously where we're paying her the big bucks and brought her in, but see, to me, it ought to be if it's directed towards a school purpose or organization. And those banners ought to say, you know, and I'm making it up now. You know, Golden Corral supports Lake Placid Dragon Football. But it ought to be very clear that it's, that that banner is there in support of and at the permission of. But it doesn't just get to be, you know, come eat at Golden Corral, you know, as an advertiser. I know that's, that's the tough way to draw a line. And, you know, I think that that's something that, in particular, Mr. Harris with his long history in this, and then, Ms. Reddell, this is the kind of stuff that you all need to do all the thinking about what-ifs and all that and come back with some recommended options.
I think that the banners need to be managed by whichever group is doing it. If the football team's doing it on the ball fields by Dal Hall, they need to manage those banners and not let them go to waste for 10 months when they're not playing football and flap in the wind. The tennis courts on Green Dragon Drive are the same way. Those banners along the softball fields and the tennis courts are relatively new thing just over the last few years. And they put them up during the season, and then they forget about them. Kids go off for summer, and the season doesn't start until the following, go through the fall until the following spring. Those banners will sit there for a long time, and they flap in the wind, fall apart. Either take them down when the season's over or manage them for a certain amount of time. Make sure that they're maintained and have someone responsible for, I would think, each group, whether it's football, baseball, softball, volleyball, whatever they're doing. That way, they can do it, but someone can answer for it if there's a problem, potentially.
I have a question.
Yes.
For y'all. When was the last time that the signed ordinance, basically all of them, were gone through? Can you-
The U.S. Supreme Court messed with us. They-
No, I'm talking about what year did we, we did-
I can't recall. It's probably a decade, and-
It's longer than that because it was-
Central Florida Regional Planning redid the, mainly was the influence in the last one because of the change in the law in regards to speech. And so they redid it, and I don't think they redid it because of the language. Correct me if I'm wrong, Bert.
I will.
They redid it because of the language. And a lot of it was kind of confusing. So council didn't get in, really into the intricacies of it whenever it was discussed. And it got passed and everything because of the speech thing mainly, and it was necessary. And it's become over the years and everything like that. There are certain things that obviously you'd like to have. You'd like to have the banners helping the kids.
We-
But it's just difficult to tell that guy, you got to take yours down. But this guy over here, and because people out on Lake June Point actually read the code. And they come at you and everything, well, what about this and what about that?
We adopted a location or two for community banners, banners that would support community events. You, the problem, the speech issue that Phil was discussing is once you say a sign can go up, you can't say what can go on it. And it can be, you know, Joe's Booby Bar right next to the church, no problem. So you really need to be careful when you start allowing more signage. We adopted our sign code, not the last one that Phil was referring to, but before that, fortunately, just before a hurricane. So all the signs had to be rebuilt after that hurricane. I forget which one it was. McDonald's had one about 300 feet tall. And when it came down, it went back up as that little tin, shorter 20-foot max. And so did a lot of other signage. So be careful if you loosen it. It's easy to loosen. It is absolutely impossible to build, to rein in a sign code. A sign once constructed is just like a home. If you approve somebody building the home, you can't say, I changed my mind a year later. You need to go take it down. It's property. So yes, it's time, I absolutely agree. There are inconsistencies we need to address. For example, the 30-day banner for new businesses. We spent a lot of time developing, okay, folks really wanted to be able to do something splashy when they open. And if we put it, if I put it in one section and not the other three, my bad. Let's fix that. Banners, you know, that was going to be a more problematic discussion. I agree with, in some places, we need to support community efforts. Let's talk about what we do there. So absolutely, let's go forward and bring it forward. There are a lot of things that need to be changed. I have an inbox where I save Phil's suggestions for the past four years. So I wouldn't limit us to signs. There are other things we need to address as well.
For sure.
Across the board, I mean, and council's seen my pictures of the, what I call the child guillotine and everything there on that aluminum board on the, in front of the school on Interlake. We have an order that says you can't spit on the sidewalk, but we don't have an order that says you can't put something like that.
And I would think that that needs to begin with a discussion because someone meant well when they designed and put that up. But I think they missed the mark, and I would encourage that to be handled with a kind visit from Dana, maybe, or not the sheriff or the police chief with his 45 drawn and discussing the guillotine. At least at first.
I did try to make a phone call on Friday, but come to learn out, it recently switched hands, so I didn't have the right person. So yes, I agree with Phil. That's something we should definitely address.
It'll take some time. I mean, you know, it'll take some time and collaboration.
Yes.
But there's, you and I have discussed it on numerous occasions that our code is in need of an upgrade.
It is.
Dana's in the mood to write, so I-
And I want to help.
I would encourage council to encourage her.
And if I might misread, I think one of the primary reasons we created the planning position and hired Ms. Reddell is to, in, with her expertise and having worked for Central Florida Regional Planning Council and seen other communities, and I know she's met, I believe she's met with all of us as to our vision of where we're going, that she needs to bring forward some ideas. Mr. Harris needs to, if he feels it's appropriate, shoot some holes in some of those ideas or suggest modifications. And I think probably all five of us, when all of a sudden the two of them come to us and say, we've got some recommendations, it's going to be really easy to consider and enact those. And if they don't agree, that's, that's fine, too, then they can each come and say, this is Dana's idea, this is Bert's idea. You guys get 100 bucks a month to pick the winner, you know, so we'd do it that way.
Pick me every time. Thank you for your feedback. Can we also revisit snipe signs? I just want to point out that I think the way it's been enforced recently has been to say, no, snipe signs aren't allowed, but if you're a nonprofit, you know, hands off. That's how we want to go about snipe signs? Or is there something that you feel like would make a snipe sign acceptable?
All snipe signs are bad.
Unless it's a little kid looking for a lost dog, then it's okay.
Unless it's parking instructions for one of our approved festivals. I thought is where we were going. And with a, with a parking plan approved by the chief of police, I thought, is that? You may not recall.
He's shaking his head.
Yeah, it's in there that you can, the chief of police can approve anything, a public event, or to do with a public event. Some of the interpretations you get into is what is, what is a public event?
Yeah. And I assume that's the hard part because it's one thing to say football tonight and have 100 football tonight signs, yet when whoever with the martial arts academy puts them out, we pull them up. You know, I mean, that's, that's the glaring-
Inconsistency that the United States Supreme Court said you cannot do.
Right.
The case involved a church that put out worship here Sunday morning at 11:00 signs. They were pulled up, and the church said, you can't do that. You let other people put out snipe signs, why can't I? Hence, we say, go put the football, football tonight signs along Green Dragon. Go for it. At least that was, I think, where it started.
I just, and I know it's tough as a small town, and we're going to, once, if we're going to do it, then we need to very clearly say, okay, even if it's one of the most well-meaning foundations in the county, no, you can't put the signs out, you know.
They send the, they, the trap is you have the well-intended cheerleader propose the football tonight sign or the Boy Scouts that want to have the bake sale sign to do good, and it's followed by someone that's not so charitable, say, I- And it's followed by someone that's not so charitable, say, I can too then. Joe's Booby Bar.
So the consensus then in general, when it comes to snipe signs are, snipe signs are bad. We don't want them regardless of.
Let's get into the details in our group and bring back a proposal.
Okay. That'll be fun. I look forward to it.
While we're on signs, do we have plans to replace the sign on 27 that says Oak Hill Cemetery that was destroyed in the hurricane?
One more time now.
That's an off-premises sign. Can't do it.
There was a sign, be quiet. You can't go one meeting without me having to tell you that. There was a sign on 27 that said Oak Hill Cemetery. So you could turn down that St. John's Road to go down to the cemetery. It got destroyed in the hurricane in case you hadn't noticed. It's not there. We need a sign there, don't you think?
Alan Kiefer for the record. I've been in contact with, I believe, who's it? Hickey?
Griffin.
Griffin. Griffin signs to make a sign that's similar to the one in front of. That has the large one made of, it's actually fake concrete, but it looks like stone. It's, it'll probably run around $4,000 to make it double-sided and to get a decent size. I wondered, I was thinking about four feet high by six feet wide. And then making a concrete pad below it that's about two feet high to give it a good size. And it's plenty off the road under the right of way.
It is an off-premises sign. You better slow down until you look at your code.
We gotta, we gotta make sure that we have the code where we can put the sign back up. But I think we do need to indicate somehow in some way that the cemetery is down that road.
We can put one of those.
Giant R book. But I mean, this is where it gets complicated and I'm assuming then by definition, all of these island dedication things might be considered snipe signs then.
Well, we made a specific judgment that if we're going to have signs that are sponsoring things that support the town, that's a location we can do.
Okay.
And that's specifically carved out.
I don't think that's a snipe sign. Oh, that's a real sign sign.
It is. I mean, and you may want to snatch those up.
No, no, I just, I wanna, but to your point.
They raise money that save us having to spend fertilizer money on.
And, and obviously I'm in favor of those and I think then that goes into the conversation of if you're gonna do that for raising money or for keep Lake Placid beautiful, then it's going to get asked to us by the Lake Placid Athletic Association to allow certain things to raise money for local athletic programs. And then of course, you know, the cheerleaders are going to want to have things. And then I assume, you know, the math elites will come to us and say, we want to raise money for, I mean, so let's, when, I mean, that's why we're not going to solve it here tonight, but you all have to think of every, and I know you went through this, thank God, at least 14 or 15 years ago predating all of us on the council, maybe not Mr. Wilson at the time, but.
No, I, I wasn't there.
We need to have that conversation.
So I don't think that what you had just mentioned, was that a decision that wasn't in the code? It was like a decision at a council meeting to?
Which question?
To allow the sponsorship signs in the right of way.
That should be in the town code.
There in town code is keep Lake Placid beautiful signs, I think.
Were you supposed to write that?
It is odd that the chamber decides whether to put them there in, in a way of keep Lake Placid beautiful.
Yeah. We'll definitely get into a little more, but I'm glad that these things are coming up so that we could talk about it and hash it out. Okay. Do I have a motion from anyone on council?
You've got general instructions.
My consensus? Okay, so I'm good?
You're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll work on it, Dana, and get, uh, code enforcement is about to come over to Town Hall. And we're trying to figure out what we want and what we need over here. There's been several suggestions to help with the driveway permit. Dana's offered to have code enforcement under her, which would give them some guidance on those heavy-duty things like going after hedges and things like that and violations, the planning violations and stuff like that. But we'd like to get the code up to par and everything where we could all, we can be consistent with our enforcement and, and everything of it. This is going to be over here right underneath us. Okay. Thank you, Dana.
All right, next is 5C1. Swain Harris and Wall Utility Easement.
Do we need to discuss this? I move to approve. What is this one? Is there anything on it? Five, the item 5C1? Have y'all read it and are moved to authorize the mayor to enter the proposed private wastewater facility agreement? Authorize the town attorney to bring an ordinance authorizing the town council to approve by resolution utility easements over town property. And that the council allow the installment of his utility line, of this utility line at the owner's risk pending approval of the utility easement ordinance.
How's that?
Okay. And I got a feeling this will not just only affect Mr. Harris's property, but probably the, the one beside of him and Pam Carlson.
My septic tank has failed. I'll pay for the line that runs up to the one that goes on the south side of the apartment complex and connects Publix. We'll have to buy that E1 pump system to pump in because it's a pressurized line, ready to do all of that. And Pam and Linda Cruz, who will be between Bert and Pam, can hook into the same one. I recommend an ordinance because our code says if you're selling town land or an interest in town land, you're supposed to do it by ordinance. That's going to be a real, and I believe I've already interpreted that to say if you're giving an easement, you got to do that by ordinance as well. That's going to be problematic and I don't want to be the first one standing up here saying, oh, we'll just do an easement because it's me. That would look horrible. So I'm going to suggest that we do all utility easements over town property in one ordinance that authorizes you to do it by resolution going forward. I don't think there's a chance in the world that the drafters of our charter intended that every time you give a utility easement, you adopt an ordinance. But it does lend itself to that interpretation. So let's do one and let you guys do future, mine and everybody else's in the future by resolution. Hope that makes sense.
I have one question and it's, it's not about this.
And for the record, I'll be paying everything just like everybody else does. There's no special deal, period, full stop.
While we are do, while the town is doing this or allowing this easement, do we need to take into consideration the property that's immediately north of those properties? The, you know, the fire department and all that, or will that be handled from a different pipe, coming from a different direction?
I'll defer to Joe on that.
So this one's going to be kind of where the property line goes, butts up against Publix. So they'll have a driveway and probably some other utilities. So I don't foresee it being in their way at all. And I don't know what their design looks like, but I, I don't think it'll cause any problems.
But there's separate deal. I just wanted to make sure before we do work and we go places, if it makes sense to upsize pipes to accommodate what we know is coming in a firehouse, that we do it. If you tell me they aren't related, that's fine. I just want to make sure before we strike off and service to those three potential properties, we take, we take into account the development we know that's coming to that small acreage.
The only other configuration that I can think of would be to put it in the center of the town lot. And that's odd because you never know for sure where those buildings are going to go. We've had false starts on this before.
Right.
So I assume the safest was to put it on the extreme east side where Publix is up against the Publix and then we can run it. I'm giving right-of-way easement along my north side to get over. If you want it moved to the center, assuming we'll have a building on each side and run it down the center, I'm good with that. I defer to Joe.
I would leave it as is. So from Publix goes across kind of the north end of the town property. There's a force main there that dumps into gravity. So Bert's tying into that and then the, the police station or the fire station can tie into that same one, wherever it is they want. It's kind of a short run. It's not, shouldn't cause any problems capacity-wise. So we're, I think this is the best configuration.
Okay, great. Thank you. Just wanted to ask a question.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any other comments from the podium? Hearing none, we'll take it to the audience. Okay, see none, bring it back, bold council.
Councilmember Sap?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Okay, we now go to 5C2, the Seventh Agreement Regarding Utility Service for the Lake Placid Camp and Conference Center.
Please forgive the late add-ons. You have a revised resolution before you that's different even from the one sent out earlier today. The differences are minor. Matt and I have conspired at this point, by the way, my opinion is that Matt and I or the conference center and the council are literally aligned and on the same side. We want a line built. We want it done right through the government, the government to pay for it and the contractor to build it without any cost overruns. So the documents are drafted in collaboration, complete collaboration with Matt. The resolution you have is to approve the, to make accommodations to award the bid and enter the contract. Attached to the resolution is the notice of award. Matt drafted that one. I drafted the resolution. And it allows the mayor to enter the award and later the contract. It allows the mayor to make certain, not certain, any minor changes because I'm sure I have not thought of every possible change that will evolve in the next two weeks. Would like to get it done prior to next council meeting. The form contract is the one Matt drafted. I've approved. It was attached into the bid documents you've previously approved. So I think it's ready to go.
It is. And I'm here to answer any questions along with Mr. All days here as well to answer your questions y'all might have. But the, the notice of award has a lot of pertinent information in it already. We will want Joe, he may have already done so, checked off and made sure it has the right numbers for your, your project number and that type of thing. And the I's are dotted, the T's are crossed. But all the forms in both the contract and in the award documents and in the bond forms, all of that is something that's come before you before that you've approved as part of the bid package that we've been through ad nauseam. I do think Corbett, there was, we are waiting on just a little bit from the FDEP, but it doesn't hesitate, we don't need to hesitate in signing off on the award or signing the contract.
Corbett All Day with Guardian Community Resource Management Offices, Dade City for the record. My only concern is that the council making the motion subject to the FDE approval. We're still waiting on FDE approval of the final bid package. Joe has sent them everything.
That's in the resolution that was passed out to council.
Okay.
Everything is, the, the award as well as the contract are subject to FDEP, FDEP, SRF approval.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you. He, he was on me about that earlier today. Let me switch to the Seventh Agreement. I, I've never in my life done a contract with seven iterations. But there, just you can't predict everything that is coming as this process has evolved. And my goal is in this document, paragraph one, we list the prior agreement. So there's no question, for example, bulks, the E, I'm sorry, D was replaced by E. So we've called out, so there's no confusion what our agreements are. The Sixth Agreement was the last one you did. And this Seventh Agreement basically says, here's how we're using the grant and the loan. There's the numbers. The million one five oh three six eighty was a grant. Then the loan is three seventy-five nine twenty. So that's all we'll be on the hook to repay. The repayment is covered by the bulk sale agreement of that exact number. The two total a million eight. We defined the wastewater line, the conference center wastewater line for the balance of the agreement. Go Underground was the low bidder. We elected, we're electing the eight-inch configuration. Joe, correct me if I'm wrong. And this is where after we say go underground, the parties agree the town shall execute the notice of award. The parties in this agreement, by the way, the district, which is the conference center and us, so we're agreeing, yes. Go Underground won the bid and it was by a couple hundred thousand dollar margin, if I remember. Joe, how much was the margin that they were under?
About 300,000.
300,000. So good company, local folks. Their contract totaled a million seven oh nine. And if you remember up here, the magic number for the grant loan totaled a million eight seventy-nine. So here's the way we break down the use of the grant loan. A million eight seventy-nine first goes to Go Underground. The remainder, which is 170,000, interesting that it came out so even.
There's a few numbers we got to correct on there, Bert, like the one seven, it's actually 113. But I, I think we'll review and make sure that's correct before.
This will be one of the things the mayor gets to change.
Yep.
So you've got money. Apparently Joe's telling me it's not exactly 170, but it's 100-plus left over. Conference Center and the town agree, agrees that will be used for construction engineering inspection. That's where we'll have a separate engineering company inspect the construction as it is being built as well as it will be used for the town's management of the grant. Somebody's got to write the checks, make the payments, make sure the subs are paid. The district obligations. If there's not enough in the grant, they reimburse us because I don't know that the 100,000 plus is going to be enough to pay CEI and our administration. But there we go. What questions? Joe, what did I miss?
The only thing I'll add was I also had an agenda item in which you'll find a Go Underground bid package. And I submitted that for you guys to, along with Bert's item, to, to see the actual bid that came in with my recommendation to award to Go Underground.
Do they need to make any decision on your bid package other than to approve the award?
Nope.
And that's in the resolution. Matt, what have I missed?
I don't know that you've missed anything on it. I, I will, just for the council's edification, Bert and I had a conversation today about allowing time for protests in the event that one of the other non-successful bidders decided to protest. Under chapter 120.57, or I'm sorry, under chapter 120, yeah, it is, 120.57. There's, the rules are as follows. They have 72 hours, three days from the date that the either notice of intent to award or in this case, the actual award, one works as good as the other. They have 72 hours in which to lodge a notice of intent to dispute or protest the award. They have then 10 days from that date in which to file an actual protest with you. So you, you don't have to do a separate notice of intent to issue an award and then an award. You can do them both at the same time. We get the ball rolling and going ahead. And it's my understanding that Go Underground is ready to get going and be ready to get going too.
Yes, and this allows us to give the notice and not enter the contract until we get past the period where a contest would be filed.
And also what that also allows us to do with this resolution. As you know, the Camp and Conference Center is required to bond this project at 115 or 125?
115.
115% of the actual contract. So the bonds that we're looking at are a little over 2.3, somewhere around there. Our folks are ready to go with that. I've been in contact with the, with our bonding agent. And once this is taken care of, we go ahead and put the bonds in place because the state's going to want to see the bonding as the collateral with you as the beneficiary on that via the SRF.
That's the performance and payment bond you're. That's the performance and payment bond you're referring to.
Well, no, sir, it's a separate, I guess you can describe it as that. It's a separate security bond for the project itself. It says if, long and short of it is, it says, look, if we somehow go under and can't pay the one point eight million dollars that we're obligated to, we've got a one point or two point three or two point two million dollar insurance policy basically out there that goes directly for the cost of this project should we default.
Contractor cannot lien town property. Therefore, his remedy is to pursue the bond claim.
Correct. And the contract, as you know, as part of the bid package, the contractor has to provide a performance and payment bond as well for this project. So it's, it's about as insured as it can get.
There are, there are a list of things that we will actually have to have in hand before I come to the mayor and say, please sign the construction agreement. Things like the, the bond he was just talking about, then there is a bond on the three hundred thousand dollars. We've got to have FDEP approval of our grant, our loan. We've already approved those documents and sent them in. We're waiting though on DEP to say, yea verily, the contract is good. And they had a couple of questions about our bulk sale, which I think we've already resolved because we did an amended and restated bulk sale agreement. They just have to say yes. What have I missed, Corbett?
Nope, you got it. That's everything.
So I'd encourage the town to adopt the resolution, authorizing the mayor to sign Agreement Seven and the other documents, and to make minor modifications in any of those should they be needed. That's in the resolution.
And then the event that happens, it's basically a two week window before, at the earliest before Bert's turn.
Yes.
Got to go through those seventy-two hours and then ten day period.
You'll know within, from the time that the mayor executes that notice of award and it's published, it has to be published in the same way that the bid documents were. And quite frankly, we're going to send, you have, the smart thing to do is send it out to everybody that bid the projects. There were two other folks that are companies that bid it. Send it out to them, you publish it. You're going to know within three days of that execution whether or not you have a protest or not. As tight as the bids were, the type of work that's involved in there, I'm not going to say it, but you know where I'm going with it. Better knock on some wood.
Which of these agreements do you want us to consider first, or can they be done together?
You just adopt the resolution, you're done.
I take it all under one, Ray.
It is.
The resolution then enables the seventh agreement.
Let's approve both. Motion to adopt the resolution and approve the seventh agreement.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution of Lake Placid Town Council regarding the conference center utilities and approval of the seventh agreement regarding utility service for the Lake Placid Camp and Conference Center.
Second.
We got a motion second. Any other comments from the podium? Hearing none, we'll take it to the audience.
Just a clerical question. Bert, does that address item D six at the same time? Or do we have to have a separate motion?
Are you in which document, D six?
On your agenda, you have the Lake Placid Force Main Lift Station upgrade bid award is item D six.
I think that was my bid package with the bid tab recommending to award. So in essence, you have also taken care of my agenda item as well.
Okay. Yes, that's correct.
Say that, Corbett. Okay, bring it back, poll the council.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
All right, we've already taken care of five C three. We'll go to five D one. Request to waiver fees for the E Learning Lab.
Mr. Mayor, this is a five K race being put on by the E Learning Lab. They are a nonprofit. The impact would be about eight hundred and fifty-six dollars on April's twenty-second. Do we have a representative from E Learning here? Okay, I thought they were going to show up. They may have shown up and left.
I moved to waive the fees for this event.
Second.
All right, we got a motion in a second. Any other comments from the podium? Okay, hearing none, we'll take it to the audience. Poll the council, please.
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
All right, next is five D two. This is one that happens every year. The Mason Smoke Foundation requesting the waiver of their fees.
I moved to waive the fees of this event as well.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any other comments from the podium? Seeing none, take it to the audience. Okay, hearing none, bring it back, poll the council.
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Okay, next is five D three, Halloween Enter Lake Road Closure.
I move to allow the road closure and waive the fees for this event as well.
Okay, they never asked for the waiver, but I think it's a, I think that's a good.
They're doing a good event for the town. They're taking responsibility. They're taking the pressure off the other neighborhoods that used to get it. And it consolidates law enforcement and control. I think it's a good thing to do.
I agree with that.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any other comments from the podium?
I just, I, I don't know because I'm not familiar with the Waters Edge area, other than I obviously know where it is. Do you think that doing this downtown is going to alleviate the problems at Waters Edge? Or are people going to come to the downtown event and then turn right around and go to Waters Edge anyway?
They may do that, but it takes the pressure off Waters Edge. I'm not sure how you can prevent that from happening, but Waters Edge was a nightmare when my kids were little. And this prevents that from happening. And I think it reduces a lot of the pressure there. For a lot of parents, they don't want to go to two or three places. They'll go to this one event, it'll satisfy their kids and they can leave, and it's good for the whole community.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Okay. All right, any other comments from the podium? Hearing none, we'll take it to the audience. Bring it back, poll the council.
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yep.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Okay, five D four, ARPA funds used for the site plan for the police department.
Mr. Mayor, we spent three thousand two hundred and fifty for building design for Marshall Marine because we had to get a, a building footprint to deliver to Polston. So where we could find out, you know, thing that we, and I've got a little insert. This is not the, not the plan from Polston, but if, let me see if I can enlarge that a little bit. It basically lays out, this is the Publix parking lot over here. And, you know, of course, we've got three things, a couple of things impacting us. You've got the, the ARPA funds, which has a deadline. You've got the, the fire department, which is, you know, really, they, they started and they, they, they have done a survey and we can furnish that, we furnished that to Polston. And we now have a footprint, approximate square footprint of thinking what we would do with the police department if we build it there on the, on the lot there behind Bert's office. And so we're kind of at the stage where do you want to use the ARPA funds? Or do you want to build the police department or, you know, explore that avenue? Do you want to use the ARPA funds for it? I mean, it's kind of, we kind of at a pivotal point here.
I'm glad you ask it that way. If we start down this road, we're going to start spending a lot of money. My fear is these numbers we're looking at may not work. What I don't want to do is commit to something and go down this road and two or three years from now be a million dollars out of whack on this thing. And where's the money going to come from? Once you start down this, you just about can't stop it. And the money has to come from somewhere. I don't know that it can be done for these numbers that are put here. The numbers that I see.
Well, this would be these two amounts, forty-nine thousand. And, yeah, of course, the money's already spent with the.
That's a huge amount, just to get the ball rolling. Forty-nine thousand extra dollars to me is, I think we might need to, I would like a little greater discussion on the issue.
And you don't even have the design plan yet. I mean, you know, what, what we have, and I sent it out to council, I don't want to share it publicly, but what we have is just basically, it's, this is the rooms and everything like that. But you don't have a design plan saying this is, the walls are going to be made out of concrete and the air conditioners are going to be, you know, I mean, that still has to be, and Polston's person that he works with, the architect in-house is not, he wasn't back from his trip yet, so he wasn't able to add his price in, in here. So this, if you'll remember, Panoni, I think quoted up around a hundred thousand dollars or something like that. And we thought that was too much. But when you, when you're doing a public building, you know, it's kind of tough to come out with a, I mean, we're, we're going with Polston and that's the only other avenue that we can go, if, if you want to build it, I mean. But, so, Mr. Mayor, if I might, so Phil, given what you're saying, and I understand Mr. Sapp's concern, shouldn't the prudent thing be that we wait till there's even a more detailed site plan and utility plan that accompanies the fire station so that we can, I mean, it seems like we would almost be working off of what they're putting in place and it would make the work, if we were to go forward with a police department building, easier. I mean, to my knowledge, we haven't seen an exact final site plan from the county yet. And while I'm generally in favor of moving forward with this location, and to me, it seems like we ought to, and I hate to say this, slow this roll just a little bit and get that from the county and have a very clear understanding of how they're going to utilize the portion of property we've donated to them.
I'd like to know, what are we on the hook for right now? How much have we spent so far? And what do we owe to whom right now?
Oh, the police department?
Yes.
I had to spend the three thousand two hundred and fifty because they had to get, you had to get a footprint.
Sure.
If you're going to ask Polston.
But that's all we're on the, that's all we're on the hook for right now is thirty-two hundred.
Police Department plan.
Okay, cool.
I mean, and, and I thought about that, that you, you could wait until, and, and it's just possibly that in some of the county's planning, they may come back with some kind of a, you know, where there's, where they propose the stormwater to be and, and, but there again, they're not exactly moving to the extent that the ARPA funds need to be spent. I mean, so. Well, I would suggest that we, I would suggest, I think, I, I'm hesitant, but I believe they are now moving a little bit. And so I shouldn't say we just wait forever on them, but I think that this is an issue that we ought to wait another thirty, maybe sixty days on and see what they're coming with. I know that they are meeting every couple of weeks on this and they are pushing it forward.
What's the deadline on the ARPA funds, the expenditure?
The, the deadline? Rachel, I think it was twenty twenty.
December twenty twenty-six.
Twenty twenty-six?
And how long do you think it will take us to build a building like is being proposed at this time?
Well, we can, we can approve this or just wait. I mean.
I mean, how long, once, once, at some point it gets approved, once you put shovel and dirt, how long before the building goes up?
Six months. It shouldn't, I mean, this is not going to be a very complicated building.
Right, right.
It shouldn't be something that takes for a very long time.
I'm just thinking if we postpone this long enough, we're going to end up to being close to that ARPA deadline.
Yeah.
I, I'm, I'm tired of waiting on it.
It will go up, but I mean, you know, I, I would like to, the architect plan, I mean, when it comes in, I'll put it back in front of council. And, you know, when, when the quote for the architect plan comes in. And maybe by that time, the, the county will be, have the fire department and.
Right.
You know, I agree, if, if you could look and see what they're going to build, it would be much better, you think, and, and to make our, our plan fit into that, but.
I think we almost have to do that.
But, but we're also up against, you know, if, they need to be moving on our timeline.
Right.
Well, and, and I'm one for, for, I've been a proponent of getting something going for a while. But I, I am in agreement with Councilman Royce in this. If, if we can wait till we can see how they're going to cite their project on there. I, I would hate to expend monies now that aren't going to be, we're going to have to change possibly as a result of their plan. So at this point, I think we need, as a council, to just continue reminding them, hey, let's move this thing on with the fire department so we, we can move accordingly.
I think we ought to ask, you know, Phil and Joe and Bert and others to maybe more in writing, you know, go to, to Lance Marine or others up there that are in charge of this project for the county and address it to Ms. Herner, the county administrator, and say, they have continued to promise to have us in the loop. And they haven't done that. I don't think it's, I don't think it's intentional, but I do know when I asked Ms. Herner about it, she meets every couple of weeks on this particular project and I, she tells me decisions are being made and things are moving forward. So I think it's just prudent to see where the utility lines that are going to impact Mr. Harris and other properties are going and to understand what the county's going to do before all of a sudden we spend twenty grand with Polston and then it all becomes null and void because lines are going in a different direction.
Right.
I agree.
Just, just two comments. I mean, we don't even have a signed agreement with them on the fire department. But on the other hand, it was impressive that they furnished you. I mean, at least they made that progress, the survey and, and what they've got so far. So at least, I mean, it's not just being sit, you know, just sat there and nobody doing anything. So they are moving, but I have an obligation also to make sure that you guys are aware of this ARPA. I'll make a motion that we revisit, that we revisit this at our next monthly meeting.
Yep, second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any other comments? All right, take it to the audience. Poll the council, please, clerk.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Next is five D five, Main Avenue, Dow Hall Discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I'm becoming a little bit concerned about the area of Dow Hall and Main Street. And I realize that they, you have funded a survey, council has funded, you know, a review of the area. I have been over, probably overbearing a lot on our roads because it's very frustrating to put in a nice, good, clean, straight road and straighten up one of these things and to have somebody just indifferently run off the side of it and, and just, and if you'll remember, Councilman Bastardi was the famous one for wanting to have something in place, how we get on and off of our roads. This is an example of what we have done in the past. These folks and everything were using, and, and I, I had pictures and everything, they used their whole front yard. This is on Michigan. So we posted a fence right across the yard. This is in front of the Montessori School. We posted a fence right, right there because the Montessori School and this lot, we replaced the roadway and they started off on it again, right off the bat. And it was just going to look just like the, the second picture down there with Montessori not maintaining their parking lot. And it was about a four inch drop off of it, which took asphalt with it every time. So we found, we put up a fence, put up no parking. And, and I told Montessori if they didn't start maintaining their lot here, that their lot there, this was our town right away and it was going to look just like this. We were going to put up a fence straight across that, which now we have a nice, good, clean road there. And it's, it's staying that way. There are other areas that are a lot more difficult. This is Golden Corral. We put up signs and they tear them down. And this was a nice, good, clean road back in two thousand eight. We got a grant and paid it. Nice, good, clean road, everything like that. It's gradually going down. The only way to cure that is with the bottom picture and everything, probably put up a rail, which if it was cost allowed, I certainly would be in favor of doing. But now we come to what we're getting to at, at, on observation in the area of what I call Dow Hall and, and a lot of the traffic. a lot of the traffic that's going on there. This is Alan's picture of another area we're addressing on Main Street, this is observation. And I'm aware that there's a lot of, you know, I mean, it's, it's kind of a desire to help businesses and, and things like that. But a lot of times they're taking up their own parking and their, you know, the food truck that is down there that Councilman Royce is concerned about and they're taking up their own parking and everything, you know, and they're, and, you know, this is, this is coming off of our back alleyway. But the main area I'm concerned about is along observation. And if we allow this to deteriorate, I mean, they're, they're going across the lot and this is Ken LeBlanc's lot here. They're coming off of here and when the rains come, correct me if I'm wrong, Alan, when the rains come, where this is, you know, is, is just going to, and, and they're going across the new place now, this is the drainage area that divides the drainage canal off of Main Street. And they're turning that into a, you can see it's a sand, it, it's becoming a sand hill. And they're going across into, into the lot and so. My concern and proposal is that we take it on and say, you know, that we'd like to pave some of the area on both sides of observation. Our town engineer has pointed out that we can do four thousand square feet with a, with, with, out having to apply with the Southwest Florida Water Management Permit. I may have to ask some, for some land here, maybe the first que, the first thing would be to get a survey and figure out how much we need to make the parking area and this is the county's lot on this side, this is Ken LeBlanc's on this side. And we may have to ask for some, some land or something like that. If they don't want to allow it, they're looking at a fence. I mean, so. Put in some parking.
I'd try to get a little more land from Mr. LeBlanc, fifteen point two feet, it's not very deep on that one side.
It's not.
So I have to go further back, if you've got to keep it four thousand instead of going a hundred and thirteen wide, bring it in a little bit to a hundred or whatever number you need to meet your four thousand mark, but it's going to definitely have to be deeper and he's going to have to make a sacrifice, I think, to make this work, to actually put parking on it.
Amen.
That's what I wanted to counsel, I mean, I'm aware of, of the, I've, I've had a lot of coun, a lot of questions from different councilmen and I know that y'all support the businesses in the area and, and you'd like to see them work, as would I. And Dana's has been big on the economy, on that sort of stuff. But on the same token, I think we have to protect our roads and, and.
Well, we've given them variances in the past, we probably need to determine how many spots all those buildings should have in that plaza area, how many parking spots they need cumulatively for that whole area.
What did we do on the circle in that area? That was just last, where we talked about reconfiguring Main and Dalhall?
We just sampled it.
Well, no, what we, no, what I, what I think we were suppo, I don't know if it's happened, but what we instructed staff to do was to send a letter to Highlands County asking them to implement or consider, I should say, consider the implementation of phase one recommendations by the consultant, in other words, put some stop signs in, do some striping. Those, I think whatever the phase one recommendations are, we asked the staff to send a letter to Highlands County, since it's their road, their right of way, to, I'm going to use the word, immediately implement those recommendations from phase one.
The reason I ask is how we configure that road ultimately could impact the discussion of what parking we remove as well as expand the need. And, and I agree, Brother LeBlanc needs to be at the table with his ink pen.
I, I think we kind of looked at that circle going, I don't think that's going to work, but I agree, we did talk about the signs, Ray. And we need, we need three stop signs there basically. That was their concern that we put, one of their proposals was to have it a three-way stop.
Mr. Harris, I, I, I don't know, you, you may very well be right, I don't know that if we, if we built some additional parking on observation in the right of way, that that would impact whatever improvements got done at Dalhall or even if we went further down to do a circle or whatever, I mean, I don't think it would, I mean.
You, you're right.
I mean, I would move them as far east as possible, you know, for sight, line of sight and all that. And, and I agree, we ought to go to Mr. LeBlanc who, if he doesn't own that property, certainly is the controlling interest in it and say, you know, we've allowed you, and I don't mean this in a negative way, you've created an attractive nuisance that we're now having to deal with.
Well, let's, let's also remember that we can control where people go on and off of our road.
Right.
If we have the appetite for that.
Right.
Joe, don't we have an ordinance in place that allows us to issue driveway, requires a driveway permit?
Yes, sir.
So, I mean, the, the first step would be go to Ken and say, you know, you got to get driveway permits to use your property and that requires construction of an apron, a proper apron across that, like Phil showed, the crossing of the drainage structure, whatever it was. And similarly, along that red area, say, you know, you can use that, your lot, but you're going to have to build the appropriate apron. And say, don't, do you really want to put us in the position of stopping your customers from tearing up our road?
I, I think it goes a little further than that though, if they're intending on using that as a parking lot, he really should come in and get that permitted and planned through the town so that it's, it's done per our code and per our standards.
You're exactly right, because parking can't be just on a dirt lot because of the dust.
And to be, and to be clear, there are other, there are other, I mean, I, I don't give a, I don't disagree, there are other businesses that are not owned and controlled by Journal Plaza that are also utilizing those areas now. And all the more reason to move forward and I know, I believe Mr. Barber's had conversations with, you know, how we should perhaps do some additional parking on North Main and so, you know, we ought to be moving forward on all of this and.
Yeah, I mean, I guess if I can just offer a little bit different perspective, like I was in Mount Dora this weekend and our residents aren't, just aren't used to having to walk to go somewhere, well, good luck finding a parking spot in Mount Dora, but if it's somewhere you want to go, I walked ten minutes. You know, so I, I think the problem is like traffic theory, people are going to park at the closest space that's available. So if we stop them from parking there, they'll still park further down, but they just won't be tearing up our roads. So I, I mean, I don't, you know, we, we had that parking study that showed there's enough parking, we're just, there, that's an easier spot to park, so we need to take away these easy spots for them to park where they're tearing up town roads.
I agree totally and I, and I think that, I don't know that it was in the same conversation, but I, I thought we all agreed that we ought to ask the county to, you know, one way or the other, restripe the public parking lot there at the annex building or health annex and, and put, you know, and have some signage, because you're, you're exactly right. I was just in a couple of places the last four or five days and we walked a half a mile to get to where we wanted to have lunch, you know, so.
Did we ask the county to take down the sign that said, no parking or something?
There was a negative sign there.
Right.
Yeah, we were supposed to ask.
If, if we haven't, then we need, we, we need, and I know that, I'm sorry, Ms. Hall's left it. She said you all need to formally request through the county administrator or maybe the county engineer, and there's a new county engineer now, that we, you know, that you implement these things on Main and that you do that and, you know, restripe or those parking lots, because I think there is confusion as to what is and isn't public parking and they need to label it and, or if we have to spend even a few of our dollars to mark some public parking, we ought to do it, you know.
And, and Ray, I have that letter drafted.
Okay.
And I'm wanting to make sure Leah, because she had asked to look at it, so I'm just making sure we're on the same page before it gets sent to the new county engineer. But I don't remember if you specifically told us to ask the county about that separate parking lot and striping, I think the recommendation was only really to look at redoing that intersection and reconfiguring.
Well, if, if, if you need a motion or you just like direction, I think that we ought to ask the county to properly stripe the public parking lots that are adjacent to their buildings in downtown Lake Placid and, and improperly, improperly provide the proper signage for public parking.
The one by the health building, I guess that is a town parking lot, so.
It's by the health department.
We're going to have to get on Alan.
It's towns or the counties?
Wait, so the one north of the shopping center is the town?
No, they're talking about the one south by the county where the old health department was. Yeah.
I'm talking about the one that's lies north of that health department.
Yep.
That belongs to the town?
No, they were looking at the wrong one.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I mean, I perceive there, I mean, between what's in front of the health department and what's north of the health department, heck, there may be twenty, thirty parking places at least that could be laid out and.
And those could be better signed and striped, like it's not real clear that those are open for parking. So I'll, I'll include that in the letter as well.
And then I, I, and I, I always forget which one of the parking lots that are north and south of Dalhall, one is the towns, one's the counties, right?
Yes, the one that's just north of like the strip mall building, I don't, can't remember what stores there are now, is the towns. The one north of that, by the pond, is the counties.
And I mean, I noticed there, if nothing else, I, I mentioned this to Mr. Williams, there's like a tree that's kind of fallen over that blocks a couple's, I mean, there's a little bit of things we could do in there just to make a couple of spots available that might just be, you know, a guy with a chainsaw in five minutes or, or the county's work, you know, prisoner crew doing some work, you know, so.
Alan, did we have that tree out yet?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I haven't been there recently, thank you, Ben, guys.
Yeah, we've got that tree out. We can, I've got the ordinance pulled up, we can post signs and, and we, we visited this a, a long time ago when I was the police chief that, that, I mean, you can put no parking and they can drive over the road curve on the way to the parking place and that, they've done the damage. I mean, driving to and from the parking place, so what we started in wording the signs was, and we had it put into the ordinance, no driving on or, so if we can track their roads, track their tracks up to their car, you know. I mean, it, it's, it's all a matter of just saving our roads, that's the bottom line. And if, if you ignore this, I mean, if we ignore this, then, then it gets to be, we're just going to be paving a bunch of roads again in another ten years.
Well, again, my, my final suggestion is that they were very proactive when they wanted something from the town and I think we probably ought to go to that group of merchants and say, we are, we are about to consider limiting some things, so you all better help us figure out what the solution here is, because we're just not going to let the right of way get torn up and the edge of the road get torn up, so.
And, and we had had some conversations with Ken who was pondering developing some of those and providing some parking, so he, you know, we, we've talked to him and he, he's aware, but right now we may need to figure out a way to stop them from tearing up town road until that happens.
This is South Main where the trucks come out of the, the, the parking down there and we did have signs along here that the town put up trying to save the road and the county come along and took them down.
No.
They did. They said, they said they, they, we couldn't post signs on the county road. Fine, watch your road go down here.
That was not what I was told by the county, that was not what I was told by the county attorney.
Right, Alan? They, they come along and removed all of them. We grumbled about it, but, you know, they did. So. These are, these are the trucks coming out of here, turning.
Not just coming out, they park there regularly, yeah.
Yep. Looks like behind Wawa in Publix parking lot now, that area in there. Anyway, that's all I got on that, I'd like, I'm just, we just, as I say, we're just noticing that the roads are bad and we're trying to, and, and it's one thing if you have a special event and I think everybody kind of agrees, we, we ignore people parking on, on special events like Kaladian Festival. It's one thing if it's one, once a year. But when you get, when you're doing it every Saturday.
Okay. Was there any motions or anything or no?
No, I think I just take the advice of council and that's kind of what, what I want to do is to get a discussion going and.
Okay.
And.
All right, the other, any other comments to fill? All right, well, we'll move on then to five D six. Force Main and Lift Station Upgrades Bid Award.
That's been handled already by a previous agenda item.
That's, yeah, to go underground, okay.
Sure.
All right. Then.
Nothing else?
I don't, I was just checking. That was it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Attorney?
I've said quite enough tonight, thank you.
Okay.
Nothing more.
All right, we'll go to our department heads, anybody have anything? No? Okay. No?
No, sir.
All right.
The only thing I would ask utility gentlemen is the day that the camp and conference center contractor, our contractor to be more specifically, actually puts a shovel in the ground, please let us all know so we can go down there and, and actually see it.
We had.
And I mean, and then, we will then start the countdown to the pipe bursting project that I also believe has been in the works for decades.
That one is out to bid, I would have you know, so we get bids soon. Do you want golden shovels?
I.
Groundbreaking?
Definitely, hard hats.
Okay.
Thank you.
What'd you say, golden sh, oh, shovels?
I'll coordinate that.
Charlie?
Uh, the, the only thing I would like to do is go ahead and make plans to apply for the FERDAP grant for the pickleball if that hasn't already started, I think the application dates are in August.
It'll be here before we know it.
Yep, so I'd, I'd like to have that going and that way we can have another crack at it once. From what I've been told, what they told us at the meeting, that it's a generally a, a pretty good chance of getting them. And the turnaround is, you know, from the time of award to actually get, it's pretty straightforward and quick, so. Once we get that commitment, now we can go back and, because I've got a lot of people that are calling me. So we got to wait another year, I was like, looking that away, so.
The window actually opens in August though.
Right, opens and I don't know when, I don't know what the specific dates are, but let's have one in there, one of the first ones if we could.
Okay. Greg?
No, sir, I'm good.
Okay. Phil? I see we still got a couple of people in the audience, do we have any words of wisdom? No? All right. If there's no other business, come before town council. Meeting adjourned.